And five, four, three, two, one.
And welcome to this, the July 8th meeting of the Livermore City Council. I called the meeting into order. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Beriantos. Councilmember Branning.
Here.
Councilmember Kick is absent for the record. Vice Mayor Carling is absent for the record. Mayor Marchand.
I'm here. Okay, if you'll please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. With that, we go to proclamations and presentations. We have the reappointment of our poet laureate Peggy Schimmelmann for another two-year term. And I think she's been doing a remarkable job. We, I was at the Poetry in a Test Tube program recently. And how much fun it was to have all the young folks come up and read their poems. So it's a delightful program that has been started by our poet laureate. I think it'd be great if it continues. So with that, is Peggy here?
She's not here tonight, sir.
Oh, okay. So we have a motion to reappoint her?
I'll make a motion to reappoint.
Okay, okay, it's moving second. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor, say five by saying aye.
Aye.
Imposed, passed unanimously. Thank you very much. Moving on to the open forum. This is, ask the city clerk to explain how people can participate.
Thank you, Mayor. The city council agendas provides opportunities for the public to participate in the meeting by addressing the city council in the following ways. For non-agendized items, the public has the opportunity during open forum to address the city council on any item of interest that is within the city council's subject matters jurisdiction. For agendized items, the public can address the city council on each of the business items it considers when the mayor opens public comment and should be focused on that particular item. Please note, a speaker is not required to answer any questions from the city council and the city council is not required to answer questions from the public. However, the mayor has the discretion to ask staff to address a speaker's comments when a council member believes it's relevant to a particular business item. When participating in tonight's meeting, one comment may be given per person per item. For consent calendar items, one comment may be given for the entire consent calendar. If consent calendar items are pulled for discussion by the city council, a speaker will be allowed one comment for each item pulled for discussion and a separate comment for the remaining consent calendar. To provide comment, please fill out and turn in a speaker card found at the entrance of the city council chambers. Speakers will be announced in order received. Once public comment opens, each participant's name will be announced and their three minutes will begin once at the lectern. The mayor will announce the conclusion of public comment period after comments have been voiced in the record. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, do we have anyone that wishes to speak at public comment?
Yes, sir, we do. The first speaker is Norm Phillips, followed by Quinn Penning, followed by Jill Weaver.
Good evening, Mayor and city council members. My name's Norm Phillips. I'm the owner of Norm's Tow Service LLC here in Livermore. My company was established May of 1981. I was born at St. Paul's Hospital on South J Street many years ago. I went to Livermore High, went to school here. I was married here. I raised my family here and I run my business here. The main reason why I'm here tonight is some misinformation that was presented to the council at the last meeting in regards to the franchise agreement with the city police department. Excuse me. I am one of five franchise companies that signed a contract recently and provide service to the Livermore Police Department. My research shows that there's approximately 330 tow units available for sale in the United States. 134 of them are heavy-duty wreckers that are new. 103 of them are used heavy-duty wreckers. 41 brand-new medium duty and 52 used medium-duty wreckers. The misinformation was that it would take a year to get a truck. That's not true. I have provided some material for the council members of the three websites that I got my information from. These are carb-compliant, smog-legal California trucks. Our Lance had heavy and medium duty for quite a few years. They chose to sell them. Allen's has had the option to buy a heavier or medium for the last 40 years, but has chosen not to do so even though there was a need for those trucks for the city of Livermore Police Department. In the first franchise agreement, medium and heavy were required, but that provision wasn't enforced. In the second franchise agreement, the medium and heavy were optional and only a few companies dealt with all of the motorhomes, boats, abandoned commercial vehicles that is a great expense to those companies. The third franchise agreement went back to the original, requiring heavy and medium trucks. Just a breakdown of what a motorhome cost me. Approximately $1,000 in towing. $6,150 in storage. Lean fee of 70. The transportation to get rid of that.
Mr. Phillips, if you could, if you could complete your thought.
Okay. About $10,000 in order to get rid of one abandoned motorhome. In closing, I'm proud to be working with the Livermore Police Department and helping them with their proactive stance on the abandoned boat, motorhome and commercial vehicle problem that is ever increasing in our community. Thank you for your time.
Mr. Phillips, thank you.
The next speaker is Quinn Penning, followed by Jill Weaver, followed by Cheryl Robinson.
Good evening, Mayor of City Council. I'm Quinn Pining, owner of Central Towing and Transport. I've been in the industry for over 40 years. 17 of those years towing for the city of Livermore. I come here tonight to educate you a little bit about the towing industry and the city towing franchise. This type of work is called non-consensual towing because the city is requiring it to be towed for a multitude of reasons. We tow all vehicles that are requested by the city. And I know that everyone thinks that's a great deal for the towing company. Well, that isn't always true. As approximately 40% of the work never gets claimed and have to be disposed of through lien sale. And through the lien sale action, the bill is not paid in the total amount due for the work. This is why I supported the city's position that it be required to have all the equipment to do all the work that is requested by the city. It's not fair to expect one or two companies to do the part of the work that costs the most to do as an example RV towing. Just a few weeks ago, you heard from towing companies that said they are not being given a fair opportunity for this franchise. I'm here to tell you that's not true. It's not fair. For years, the city has asked the towing companies to do this work and then only a few have had the equipment to do the work and suffered the biggest loss of revenue. They also stated that by making this requirement, they could not even get the trucks to do the work. Here are a few examples I will give to the city clerk that are for sale. These trucks are all found within the state of California, most of them being new. I am also proof of this as I bought a new heavy truck in September of last year. Took me three weeks to put that truck in service from the time I purchased it. What all this boils down to is a business decision for them to spend the money on the equipment to do the work or don't. And they chose not to. I am here to answer any questions that you have now or in the future. You have my email and my phone numbers. Thank you for your time.
Mr. Pining, thank you.
The next speaker is Jill Weaver, followed by Cheryl Robinson, followed by Paul Pentey.
My name is Jill Weaver and I have been a resident of Livermore Alameda County for five years. I'm a volunteer with United Sovereign Americans, not a spokesperson. United Sovereign Americans is a nationwide organization with thousands of active volunteers in over 24 states. Today I come to you as a concerned citizen, sharing alarming information about our state's voter database uncovered through thousands of hours of research conducted by a highly qualified and credentialed data team. While the numbers are staggering and somewhat difficult to comprehend, one thing is clear. They don't add up. Just like your checkbook must balance, so must our votes. If you had 10,000 fewer dollars in your bank account than you deposited, you would certainly want to know what happened. And if a company that had that significant a discrepancy in their books, they would most certainly conduct an audit. In fact, yearly audits are required by law for all, all public companies. Our audit of the 2022 election using only official data provided by state elections officials shows that the 2022 election may not have been accurate or legally compliant. We're not seeing one candidate one over another or that any election should be overturned. The state's official data from a certain certified election shows that the votes are counted as counted, were not all valid and accurate under the law. Tonight, we will present you with a resolution demanding an end to the inaccuracy and uncertainty plaguing our nations along with a summary of our findings and the laws that apply. We're happy to meet with you to go over this information, including more detail about specific findings. If you find, if you have any questions that I cannot answer now, I will commit to getting you all the answer, the answer in writings from United Sovereign Americans executive team as soon as possible. This data and our request for an investigation have been shared with state election officials and law enforcement. It's essential that you as a representatives make it clear that these must be taken seriously. Tonight, we come to you, our closest elective representatives for support and action. We're asking that you listen to the resolution, ask questions if you have them, and then vote promptly for its passage. Your action on this resolution will illustrate your dedication and support to the concerns of your constituents and your country. Thank you. Our next three speakers will read the resolution in three parts and our final speaker will conclude our presentation. I will continue. The following is a resolution for legally valid 2024 general election. Whereas it is a recognized civil right in the United States for every citizen to have free and fair elections, quote, and the right of suffrage can be denied by debasement or dilution of the weight of a citizen's vote just as effectively as by wholly prohibiting the free exercise of the franchise, end quote. U.S. Supreme Court Reynolds versus Sims, 1964. Whereas it is the duty of our elections officials to guarantee our elections are accurate and free from distortion or manipulation, quote, Congress seeks to guard the election of members of Congress against any possible unfairness by compelling everyone concerned in holding the, holding the election to a strict and scrupulous observance of every duty devolved upon him while so engaged. The evil intent consists in disobedience to the law, end quote, U.S. Supreme Court in Leroy, 1888. Thank you.
The next speaker is Cheryl Robinson, followed by Paul Pentey, followed by Catherine Villasenor.
Hello, my name is Cheryl Robinson and I have been a resident of the Alameda County for over three years and I'm also a volunteer with United Sovereign Americans. Whereas our constitutional system of representative government only works when the following four tenets of an election are upheld, when the voter rolls must be accurate. National Voter Registration Act 1993. Votes, number two, votes counted must be from eligible voters, U.S. Constitution 14th Amendment, Section 2, number 3. The number of votes counted must equal the number of votes, voters who voted. Four, there can be no more than 125,000 ballots in error by the voting system. Help America Vote Act 2002. Whereas, open source audit of the California 2022 general election conducted by California citizens has uncovered evidence of massive inaccuracies appear to violate both federal and state laws, including 5,886,198 ineligible or uncertain registration violations found within the California State Voter Roll Database. 2,776,939 votes cast by ineligible or uncertain registrants. 123,785 more votes counted than voters who voted. No one who, no one knows who cast them. 2,776,849 apparent voting violations are in excess of the legal standard of system accuracy for a valid federal election. The maximum allowable system errors for the 2022 general election in California was 90. Certification as denied, as defined by law and attestation of accuracy and compliance appears to have been fraudulent and illegal. Whereas these findings trample legal accuracy requirements of the voting system during a federal election. Accuracy is defined as the ability of the system to capture the report and report and specific selections and absence of selections made by a voter without error. Whereas the intent of the voters must be known factually before the certification can be lawfully conducted. Certification of an election that varies from the law is an abridgement of the civil rights of the citizens, a fraud ab initio. United States versus Throckmorton, 1878. Quote, "From time immemorial, an election to public office has been in point of substance, no more and no less than expression by qualified electors in their choice of candidates," end quote. U.S. Supreme Court, United States versus Classic, 1941. Thank you.
The next speaker is Paul Pentey, followed by Catherine Villasenor, followed by Charles Hens.
Good evening. My name is Paul Pendley. I've been a resident of Alameda County for over 68 years and I too am a volunteer with United Sovereign Americans and continue with the resolution. Whereas, the 2022 general election appears to have been invalid, depriving us of the guaranteed protection of our natural rights under a government duly and privably chosen by us, the American people, resulting in incalculable damage to our families, our way of life and the fabric of these United States. Therefore, we call upon our representatives to provide relief to the people and the assurance of domestic tranquility by joining us in demanding a valid 2024 general election that upholds these existing laws and equitable principles of the law. Number one, proof of citizenship, identity and eligibility required to register and vote, not anonymous attestation. Attestation. Number two, voter rolls certified accurate and available for public review and challenge 30 days before the start of early voting. Voters after, added after that date must prove, must bring proof of citizenship, identity and address in person to a qualified official at each polling place. Number three, hand-marked secure ballot similar to currency. Where imaging technology is used for tabulation, the security features must be verifiable in the ballot image. Number four, systems, machines, security measures, infrastructure and conduct are required to be compliant with federal law for fraud prevention regarding risk assessment, certification, testing and implementation. Adjudication must be signed off by party, candidate and trained citizen witnesses after being given full and effective observation rights. Candidates and trained citizens must be allowed immediate access to ballots, ballot images and CVRs. Number six, ballots regardless of entry source, election operations and systems must maintain end-to-end chain of custody from voter to vote count to final canvas, including auditability and witness transfer with paper records. Number seven, an NSIT compliant randomized statistically valid end-to-end audit with a 95% slow, a 11/14th sexually performed. That's hard to be acted by qualified audency for final audit personnel in the elect system. Regulation will include the vote count, real physical ballots, adjudication, CVRs, ballot count, qualified voter count, custody transfer and all other paper electronic election systems, including logs. Number eight, if the total of unique variances above is more than 10% of the margin of victory, a new election must be held in the state for those candidates affected unless the issues can be provably corrected by a manual hand recount and a full review of records. Thank you.
Excuse me, if I could ask, what's a CB, what's a CBR?
Cast vote record.
Oh, thank you.
It's how we document all of our elections.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Catherine Villasenor, followed by Charles Hens, followed by Mark Zulim.
I'm Catherine Villasenor. Number nine, waiver of requirements is not allowed. Only end-to-end system compliance from registration through certification can guarantee the intent of the people is accurately recorded. Be it resolved that the Livermore City Council members stand in support with the concerns and remedies presented here. We implore the Alameda County Board of Supervisors, California Legislature, federal legislatures, law enforcement, federal and state prosecutors, judges and both California Secretary of State and county registrars of voters to cooperate and fulfill these firm requests of the people. What you heard tonight is the culmination of thousands of hours of work by our highly qualified and credentialed volunteer data teams. Data teams from California and across the country. It's a powerfully written resolution outlining massive inaccuracies in our 2022 election from registration through certification. In it, you heard us ask for meaningful remedies that will proactively protect the validity of the 2024 general election for all Americans. In fact, the resolution cited many U.S. Supreme Court precedents that support the need for such actions. Laws are being ignored. Bottom line, the checkbook is not balancing and we need certainty. The voting system, which controls our most vitally important right, the right to choose our representatives, is not producing an accurate, trustworthy result. Do you think that these anomalies within our election system, a system which is part of our national security infrastructure, should continue to be ignored? Thank you.
The next speaker is Charles Henzie, followed by Mark Zulim, followed by Wayne Hinkins.
Mayor, City Council, thank you for this opportunity to address you. My name is Charles Henzie. I've been a resident of Alameda County for 35 years and I'm also a volunteer with the United Sovereign Americans. So we conclude as follows. So let's step back for a second and look at the big picture. Large numbers of Americans, including many right here in California, have questions about the trustworthiness of our elections. I think we can all agree that we wish this was not the case. But official data shows these concerns are valid and the law says resolving them is essential in securing our liberty. How much is it costing us not to fix the problem? How much is it costing our GDP, our military, our foreign policy, our health, the self-esteem of our children and young people? And how much is it costing our dignity to keep fighting each other? The cost is immeasurable. So we urge you to agree by putting this resolution on the agenda for the next city council meeting and voting in support of fair, honest and valid elections. Our website shows our initiatives nationwide and has some extremely informative videos revealing the anomalies and apparent violations of law in California. So the website is uniteforfreedom.com. That's unite, the number four, freedom.com. So I encourage you to check it out and learn more about our organization. We look forward to providing you with more information, data, perhaps putting this on the agenda in the near future. Thank you very much for your time.
The next speaker is Mark Zulim, followed by Wayne Hinkins, followed by Mike Kellit.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Thank you. My name is Mark Zulim. I have put before you, thank you, the resolution that the team of volunteers just essentially read to you. By no means that is every bit of data, the cast vote records have been analyzed by a team of experts. I am, have lived in Alameda County for 65 years, retired from Lawrence Livermore Lab 16 years. So I love Livermore and I love the East Bay. So we are a team that's going throughout California. We have analyzed the data and we would be more than happy to meet with you to go into the details of what this all means. I think NIST is National Institute for Standards and Technology. You probably know that, Mayor. So my name is on their email. If you have any questions, please contact us and check out our website. There's probably more speakers here who want to talk about this subject. Election integrity is a very serious matter. As you know, this is a big election year in November that that's coming up. So a lot of us have given our time. And yes, I am bored since I retired because this is what I'm doing. I retired December 2022 and I miss the lab. So maybe I'll go back. Thank you for your time and I look forward to talking to you. Thank you.
The next speaker is Wayne Hinkins, followed by Mike Kellit, followed by Gerald Pachinak.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, council members. My name is Wayne Hinkins and I've been a resident of Alameda County for 30 years. And like Mark, I'm retired and looking for things to do. And one of the things that I did recently was go on a canvassing team to verify the voter rolls. We were given registered voters who do not live in Alameda County. It was given the state that they moved to, when they moved, but still they're receiving ballots for the elections. I was very surprised when I saw this. And I wanted to, to learn more, which I did. And I've learned that an election that does not have trust and respect is like a marriage that does not have love. It's empty, it's shallow, it's pretentious and there's something that is totally wrong about it. We need to have trust in our election process, but when so many voters, literally thousands of registered voters do not live at the address that they are registered for, but ballots are still mailed to that address. So my point in coming and speaking is to urge you within your powers to clean up the voter registration rolls that we have here in Alameda County, in the city of Livermore. So thank you for your, for your attention. Thank you.
The next speaker is Mike Kellit, followed by Gerald Pachinak, followed by Greg Scott.
My name is Mike Kellit. I'm a, I've lived here 25 years in Alameda County. Thank you, Mayor and council members for your public life. It's very important. My mother was a mayor back in, King of Prussia in Valley Forge when I was a young man. And so I think that's in me a little bit to have this civic-mindedness. I, and I'm pretty new to waking up to be a public-minded person and not in the sense of, of, well, this is voter integrity. I, I lived in Russia, former Soviet Union for about five years during the time of Perestroika. I lived in Burma, different countries with very authoritarian type of government. And my government here, my country, I love my country. And if I were to say one thing about our constitution, it would be less government. That's in a nutshell. But we do need to understand it because if we don't understand our That's in a nutshell, but we do need to understand it because if we don't understand our constitution, we can't defend it. And so this is one reason why the, this talk about voter integrity is so important because the end does not justify the means. And even though you have a passion for something in your, in, in your democratic or republican side, we need integrity. And even if we have a perfect system and we don't have people with values, you mess up everything. So it always goes back to where does that come from? And I think it's very important that, you know, we understand right now there is a march through our institutes to teach this what I call woke ideology, something that I'm, if you ever get to know me, Mike Kellit, I, I'm gonna, I'm teaching it. It's woke ideology critique and counter reposal. And right now there is this way, this, but I'll go with the ideal, e pluribus unum for many or one. Right now there is this spirit to divide our country through race and through gender. And people are confused about these basic values that our forefathers strive so hard from Rome. Actually, last night I saw the Gladiator again for many times. So I'm kind of Rome, the Magna Carta, Declaration of Arbat, our, our founding fathers were so studied and so sincere. And the big point is that they wanted to have a more perfect republic. They weren't perfect, obviously. And we can, we can do something better. There's enough space for everyone and, but we do need integrity. We need a clear, you know, a system that can be checked because when you don't have, you know, as a parent, right? You don't, when you don't have consequences for mistakes, people get crazy. I know personal police officers who, you know, during the riots we had most recently and picking up the same people the next night. And I know many people grew up in Oakland and, you know, just who, who respected police and can see if you, without that, you know, it, it's crazy. It's crazy. So integrity is so important and that's your private life. So we can't separate our values from how we make decisions. It's, it's contradictory. So it's so important. I, I just have so much respect. I can feel in Russia, they call the atmosphere. So I'm so thankful for to be here. What a great atmosphere in Livermore. Thank you.
The next speaker is Gerald Pachinak, followed by Greg Scott, followed by John Stein.
Thank you very much to the mayor and to the councilmen that are here tonight. I'm Gerald Pachinak. I've lived in Alameda County for the last ten years. And I have had an interest in following election integrity. And I must say, and I think the mayor and the council members would agree that this is the appropriate time to bring this kind of resolution forward. In other words, you don't want to wait till after the election and then say, hey, we didn't have accurate voting rolls, right? The intention, as I see it personally, is to try to clear up these problems that exist before the election. Makes sense because that is a sign that there is a commitment on the part of the elected officials who we depend on to do this. And trying to ignore it, for example, and it's the only other example I bring up. There's a national debate right now about a bill that's in the U S Congress about the questions of people being registered to vote that are not citizens of the United States. We had a particular problem in California because when you go to the D M V, most of the time you get registered just by saying, I think I'm a citizen, you know? And therefore, that is not a valid way to run a system because it, it just opens it up to so many questions. And from my experience, I, I don't think this is going to be able to be swept under the rug. And so the time is right now and I really appreciate you guys taking the time to look through the data, question it, disagree, you agree, whatever it is. But take the time now when it can be done in an orderly and truthful and just manner. Thank you.
The next speaker is Greg Scott, followed by John Stein, and the last speaker will be Alan Marling.
Good evening. I'm Greg Scott. Unfortunately, Councilwoman Kick isn't here today. I'm addressing Councilwoman Kick's parenting metaphoric analogy on legislative and administrative given in the last city council meeting with the oral validation of the Livermore City Attorney. The analogy is of a child or children in a household getting permission to go to the backyard. This is deemed a legislative process. Getting permission to open the back doors deemed an administrative process. Apparently, the electorate of Livermore are children by this metaphoric example. One problem with this, in this example, is with the timing. The children were already in the backyard. No one said anything about the administrative backyard, back door at the time. The dog was also left out. The dog is the referendum that the children fostered. There are around six thousand or so valid children in the backyard, referred to denigratively as a small group. However, the children made the dog eligible for a dog license. There are also three fruit trees loaded with fruit in the backyard. Two are completely in the backyard and one has branches hanging over the back fence. Of the trees entirely in the yard, one has fruit worth seven point eight million dollars. The other up to four point three million dollars in fruit. The tree with branches over the back fence has around five point five million dollars in fruit. At some point, the children and the dog decided to go back into the house, pass the administrative back door propped open that no one said anything about. That was on Friday, July eighth, twenty-twenty-two, two years ago today. The House Matriarch is the Livermore City Clerk. The House Patriarch is the Livermore City Attorney. The children and the dog were in the house for five days until Wednesday, July thirteenth, before the Patriarch of the House, the Livermore City Attorney, told the Matriarch to tell the children that the dog should not be in the house because of the administrative back door. In fact, the Patriarch said the Matriarch, to the Matriarch, that the household shouldn't have the dog at all. Then there was a big dust-up. Animal Services and Child Protective Services, the Superior Court got involved and nothing was done. Then the Appeals Court got involved with something about the fruit tree on the, the fruit on the tree with the branches hanging over the back fence being legislative. Two things here. One, the Livermore electorate are not children. Two, the electorate has every right to have a say as part of their community. As a point of governance and civics, I had to take a class in my junior year in high school to graduate. Emails, pro and con, are not a ballot box vote. Livermore City Council speakers, pro and con, are not a ballot box vote. Only a ballot box vote is a ballot box vote. Back to court, as is the electorate's right. Now we are in the blame game. Who is being exclusionary? Is affordable housing going to be framed, banned across the city? Why not? Lots of certain size contain, could contain an A D U accessory dwelling unit. Should we mandate that with, that, that without any property tax increase? Land could be obtained by eminent domain for high-rise affordable housing. Business properties on Railroad Avenue already have been obtained for current development by eminent domain. Reference, U S Supreme Court, Kelo versus City of New London, twenty-two thousand five.
The next speaker is John Stein, followed by Alan Marling.
Good evening. My name is John Stein. I live at thirteen thirty-four Cathy Court in the city of Livermore. I'd like to speak to you about global warming. Carbon dioxide and average temperatures are at an all-time record and still increasing. The question is not when or if, it's how much now. And it's going to be a long time before things turn around. One mitigation is to plant trees. There's warming centers and air conditioning, but they're not accessible to everyone. Over the past few years, a lot of the city trees, because of drought and disease, have passed away. They've turned into firewood. Two good examples are the carobs around Carnegie Park and the ashes that shaded the city parking lot on the corner of Livermore Avenue and Third. Both of those are all gone and haven't been replaced. We need to plant more trees. We need volunteers, city staff. Everybody needs to plant more trees, replacing city trees, planting more trees in open space. And in existing development, it's still pretty good, although it's being impacted by A D Us and people paving over their front yards for parking. With new construction, the open space requirements over the past decades have been eroded. It used to be a development required a thousand square feet of public and a thousand square feet of private open space for each unit. Currently, it's three hundred square feet of private open space and three hundred feet of public open space. And you're now allowed to count things like plazas and balconies and rooftops, not only landscaped areas. What we're doing is we're creating urban ovens. You look at new developments with drones and a lot of them have, aside from a fringe of street trees, very little landscaping. The same way, when is the last new city park, sports field, urban garden been built? We need more landscaped open space. A goal should be twenty or twenty-five percent. And that rule requires changes in design guidelines, increases in height limits, required submerged parking. But it can be done and it needs to be done if we're not going to leave our children and grandchildren a very hot city. Thank you.
The next speaker is Alan Marling.
Mayor and councilmembers. I am a Livermore resident. Unlike many of the previous speakers, these non-residents are upset working class and people of color are voting and prefer they stay disenfranchised. When they stoke fears of election integrity is because they do not value democracy, at least not the democracy which believes in majority rule. Their goal is to purge voter rolls, keep as many people from voting as possible because they believe in minority rule. Specifically, they cling to outdated Christo fascist values such as restricting a woman's right to control her own body. When they say we need more election security, they mean that only rich people should vote, only older people should vote, and let's be honest, only white people should vote. They should have a car, these people, in order to vote. They should have a driver's license and a home address. And above all, they should have a full day to vote in person. This is not the sort of progressive values we need in California, which gets as many people to vote as possible. I urge you, whether, whether these speakers were residents or not of Livermore, I urge you to give them only the attention they deserve, which is less than none.
That concludes open forum.
Okay. Thank you very much to all the speakers tonight. With that, we're going to move on to the consent calendar. These are typically items that are routine in nature and are typically passed with a single vote. However, is there anyone that wishes to pull an item for discussion? Five-five, okay. Anyone else? Okay, five-five. Let's see. Well, I've got some comments to make on five-three. Don't necessarily need to pull it. Do we have any public comment?
Are we doing public comment on the rest of the calendar or just five-five?
Consent, not the consent calendar, the whole consent.
So we're not doing production on five-point?
Well, okay, so we'll do separate action on five-five, but is there anything else that anybody wants to talk about on consent?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. So let's, let's have the speakers for consent and then we'll pull five-five, but. Okay, so we'll pull five-five, but if anybody else wishes to speak on consent, we'll take those comments first.
Okay. The first speaker is Alan Marling.
This is, this is on item five dot six. An ounce of prevention is worth a pound of cure. The best way to prevent crime is with opportunity and counseling. Money spent on therapy, keeping people from prison or from going back to prison is well-spent and will save the country, county money, as well as make the world a better place. I urge you to indeed vote yes on this measure as a consent calendar.
The rest of the speakers are for five-point-five.
Okay, very good. Okay, so what I'll do is, I just have a few comments on five-point-three. There's some confusion online that I wanted to address. Now, as I understand it, the, the water systems and the sewer systems, the wastewater, those are all enterprise funds. Is that correct? So the money collected for those stays with those funds.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, this is your city manager, Mariana Marshall. That is correct.
Okay, and a few years ago, we increased the sewer charges because as we did an analysis, we understood that there was not sufficient revenues being collected to ensure the timely replacement of the equipment and the materials for the wastewater system.
That is correct. That is the correct statement, Mr. Mayor.
I, I used to call those renewal and replacement allowance within the, the fee structure. So this five-point-three is actually to, I think we're putting up close to six million dollars for replacement at the wastewater plant to ensure that it continues to work the way it's supposed to and recognize the fact that those animals that are painted on those tanks, that's what we're protecting by what we do at that plant. Okay, so that's, just to state, there, there was a lot of misunderstanding around that. And to Mr. Marling's comment, yeah, big shout out for Horizons. They do phenomenal work. They really do. And I sincerely appreciate the great work they do. So I'd like to take a motion for five-point-one through, let's see, five-point-six, five-point-seven. So five-point-one through five-point-seven and we'll pull five-point-five out for, for further discussion. Do you have a motion?
Yeah, I'll move five-point-one to five-point-four and five-point-six and five-point-seven.
Okay, very good. And we've got a limited bench up here. Thank you for the second. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Passed unanimously. Thank you very much. Moving on to five-point-five. This is regarding the open space purchases that are proposed. Altamont Landfill Open Space Committee and the open space funds.
The first speaker is Michael Fruchy, followed by Diana Roberts, followed by Jean King.
Good morning, Mayor, City Council, staff. I'm Michael Fruchy. I'm the president of Citizens of Balanced Growth. Item five-point-five is a violation of the Dory Valley Settlement Agreement and should be tabled. Thank you.
Mr. Fruchy, would you please explain why it's in violation? No, no, Mr. Fruchy, please, now is your opportunity. The city, as I understand, has been reaching out to C B G for months and have not received a response from C B G.
There have been several responses and I will respond to you in person if you'd like. This is the place, not right now.
This is all public.
Right now, it's a violation of the agreement. So it's up to you guys what you do.
Okay. Interesting. All right. So he's calling it a violation, I presume, because we haven't been in touch with them. Although it's my understanding that we have made numerous overtures to, to C B G.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Paul Spence here, Assistant City Manager. The city has reached out across five separate months between December and April. In April, finally identifying three different dates to try to meet and we were unable to get a meeting with the group during those times. We were rebuffed and they were not willing to meet with us.
Mr. Mayor, if I may also just add a couple of points, I believe the detail of the city's attempts to meet with the committee are documented in our staff report. I also will note that because the committee was unable to meet with staff despite multiple efforts, we took their position as a no position and that is noted in our staff report as well.
Do they need to, according to the agreement, we're supposed to confer with them. Does it require their, their compliance or their affirmation of the action?
No, Mr. Mayor, it is up to the city council to make the decision on the expenditure of those funds.
Well, for what it's worth, I believe that we already have the input from the C B G because their representative was in this hall and said unequivocally that the staff should not pursue any open space land using open space funding. And that's very clear. They do not support this, this proposal. And furthermore, the representative actually said, I don't want Livermore to buy any new open space. So I think they've made themselves extraordinarily clear. On the other hand, we've got a letter from Save Mount Diablo. Says, we are writing this letter to support Livermore City Staff's recommendation with respect to agendizing open space. respect to agendizing open space acquisitions of the Altamont Hills and Greenville Road properties. We encourage the city council to authorize the purchase and sales agreements and allocate city funds for these acquisitions. It is essential to maintain this mostly undeveloped corridor, to maintain the ecological connectivity between the Mount Diablo region and the rest of the Diablo range. So I think it's very clear that they don't support this, but we have a number of folks that do support it. And the staff report actually says that the long-term interest of the city of Livermore is preservation and perpetuity. Preservation and perpetuity. And I think that everybody could get on board with that because as former city manager Mark Roberts would say, perpetuity is a long time. And that is the goal for both properties, is that correct?
Yes, sir, that is correct.
And both these parcels are willing buyers and willing sellers because willing sellers, that's a requirement within the agreement is they had to be willing sellers.
In both cases, we have willing sellers, yes.
Okay, okay. We've already gotten the answer. The answer was given to us from the representative, the identified representative of Citizens for Balanced Growth. He expressed his opinion on the acquisition in this council chamber. So I feel that we have heard from CBG. I'll defer this to the city attorney. What's your, what's your take on that, Mr. Alcala?
Mr. Mayor, this is your city attorney, Jason Alcala. We have conferred with staff on this one and their approach seems to be reasonable.
Any other speakers?
The next speaker is Diana Roberts, followed by Jean King.
Okay.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council Members. My name is Diana Roberts and I'm here on behalf of Tri-Valley Conservancy, a local nonprofit land trust protecting and advocating for agricultural and open space land in the area. I'm speaking in support of the city's acquisition of the Hartford and Greenville properties. Both properties that are being considered tonight are in preservation priority areas identified by the Tri-Valley Conservancy and would benefit the local community and wildlife in the area while also fulfilling the open space goals within the city's general plan. The Greenville property is vital to the preservation of the eastern boundary of the city and is a strong priority of the Tri-Valley Conservancy. The purchase and preservation of the Greenville property under a conservation easement would contribute to solidifying the existing urban growth boundary in the area, preventing sprawl and creating a permanent green belt around the city. In addition, this property would support the South Bay Aqueduct Trail Priority identified in the city's trail implementation strategy. This trail would connect north and south Livermore along the eastern boundary, providing much-needed trail access to this region. The Hartford property in north Livermore has a number of natural and recreational benefits and the acquisition of this property would also contribute to the trail priorities in the area and make it possible to establish the northern portion of the Arroyo La Cidus Trail, increasing access to open space for north Livermore residents and beyond. Tri-Valley Conservancy has a long history of partnering on land preservation projects with the city of Livermore. Currently, Tri-Valley Conservancy is working on multiple projects with the city to preserve sensitive habitat, ensure active management of conserved land, and provide greater and safer access to open space in and around the city. Tri-Valley Conservancy has partnered with the city to preserve and manage more than 3,000 acres of agricultural and parkland in the south Livermore Valley area and more than 200 acres of sensitive habitat land in north Livermore. This has included preserving Sycamore Grove Park for public recreation and land within Duoling Canyon and north Livermore's Alcoa Sink for permanent habitat preservation. We look forward to continuing this relationship with the preservation of additional open space properties in and around the city of Livermore. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Jean King.
Good evening. I am Jean King and I'm speaking for Friends of Livermore, a community organization that supports open space in the valley. Friends of Livermore supports the city purchasing these two properties to preserve them for open space and to protect their biological importance. Their location outside Livermore's city limits and urban growth boundary will protect our UGB. The area has habitat for sensitive, threatened, and endangered plant and animal species. FOL strongly supports permanent conservation easements on the two properties to protect the open space and biological qualities and provide for long-term stewardship of the lands. The entity that holds the easements should monitor the properties, protect the resources, and enforce those protections. Purchasing the property is important. Long-term protection as open space and stopping illegal dumping, off-trail use, and motorized biking is equally important. Public access to the land may need to be restricted. It's a land has conservation easements for open space and biological mitigation. I was surprised that the third property, the cross property, was not on the agenda since the ALOSC Cross Property Grant will be considered by the Board of Supervisors this Thursday. Thank you.
Thank you.
That concludes public comment.
Okay, I'm going to close the public comment period on the consent calendar. My mind, in these chambers, we heard and conferred with CBG. I mean, they made it very clear their position and I don't think that we have made a good-faith attempt. If the council, if the staff shows me that they have, and I certainly believe them, five months should be plenty of time to come together and meet. But if somebody doesn't want to meet, then we never will. So, but on the other side, we very clearly heard from CBG what they feel about this purchase. They don't want it. We've heard from Tri-Valley Conservancy and Friends of Open Space and Vineyards that they do support this. So I would be willing to accept a motion to move five-five. Pardon me?
I have some things to say.
Okay, please do.
Okay, yeah, I was wondering about this and I'm for the, just a little story. When I was in college, we were driving down with my coach from Chico State. We were driving down El Camino and he was kind of amazed. I said, what? He goes, you can't tell when you're going from one city to the other. It's just a mass of buildings and all the way down from, we were going from, I'm not sure where we were coming, Chico State. And I know what we're trying to do. I know we're going to have some trouble on that, you know, that Dublin thing coming up on the north side of the freeway. But my concern is that I'm afraid we're going to get into another lawsuit. So I want to have CB, these guys, I know there's three, one died, right? From the CBG? And so there's Michael Fruchy and Doug Mann. And they're the two left. And what I've been finding out is that they said they were upset because the city was not giving them some documentation that they wanted. And without that, they couldn't come to a meeting and talk about what you want. And I think therefore, they're buying the property, but they want to go and make sure the property is done the right way and they do want some input. So I'd like to see one more affirmative, talk to these guys, at least one of them.
Well, how much time do we give them? I mean, it would have taken five months.
Can we ask them right now?
Well, he wouldn't talk to us. Mr. Fruchy, how much time do you need? How much time do you need?
So.
For the record, Mr. Fruchy has refused to respond. I think that's what we're going to get if we continue to wait.
Well, anyway, I still think that we should give them at least.
He didn't respond. Which, a couple of years?
No, I think.
It's been five months.
How about another month then?
Why? They refused to respond.
Well, I'm, you know, I'm.
No, no, why would we face a lawsuit? The requirement is that they're, that we confer with them. They already spoke to the council and they said that they oppose this. So I don't, I really don't see a need because there's no threat of a lawsuit because they've already conferred with us. They already spoke their opinion.
May I?
Yeah, please.
Councilmember Branding. Okay. So this hasn't gone exactly how I thought it was going to go. Mr. Fruchy, like, you did yourself no favors with your comments here. When I met with you in the hallway beforehand, I thought you made a pretty good argument. And I understand where you're coming from. You told me, you know, you've come here to be reasonable, you've come here to talk. And then your comments were basically that you weren't going to talk. It hurts your case a lot to say that you have come here to negotiate with us, that you've come here to talk with us, and then said you're unwilling to say anything. I do understand Councilmember Beriantos' point. That was actually where I was before public comment was I was looking to give you some more time. I don't think that there's anything that's going to change in this if we give you more time. I think it's kind of a waste of staff's time and council time to bring this back. What I was willing to offer is that if you were willing to meet with staff this week, that we could bring this back at the next meeting and move forward. I don't see any reason to delay it beyond two weeks. So. However, you came up and basically said that you're not interested. So. I would invite you back to the dais if the mayor would allow it to answer, would you meet with staff before Friday?
Please speak out.
Would you be willing to come up? Just for the record, would you be willing to come up and let us know if you'd be willing to meet with staff before Friday? Sorry, I know about your knee, but this is important for the record.
For the record, I'd be willing to meet with staff. I'd be willing to meet with you.
Before this Friday?
I'm sorry.
Before this Friday. So by the end of this week.
You mean like in two days? Three days, sorry. Four days, oh, it's Monday. Yeah. I will get back to you.
All right. This is going to drag on. You've had five months. And you wouldn't even respond when I asked you how long you needed. And what that tells me is that there is no, there's no endpoint. It's however long you can drag this on. Now, Councilmember Branding just asked if you'd be able to meet within this week and you can't commit to within a week.
I will meet with Evan, yes.
How about staff?
With staff?
We'll meet with staff.
I will, I will get back to you on that.
No, no, the high key is the city has to confer. Pardon me?
Stop.
So if I may, my offer to you is you can agree to meet with staff by Friday. If you do not meet with staff by Friday, this will be final confirmation in public, in front of everyone, on camera, that the answer is no, you do not support the purchase. We will take that as your final recommendation. We will take that as your final recommendation.
That's not a true statement.
Given that we have offered you months of time to meet with us. And so my offer is either, and you can choose, and I'll allow you to choose, either we can carry on with the item today, and I believe there are the votes to carry on, or we can delay this till the next meeting. It will come back on our calendar in two weeks with the recommendation that you have said no, unless before the agenda is published, which means by this Friday, you arrange a time to meet with staff, confer with them, and give them an alternate opinion. If you come back with some other opinion by Friday, it will be included in our agenda as a consent item at our next meeting. Regardless of whether you meet with staff or not, the item I propose is that we table this until the next agenda.
And that was my intention, to try table at least one more meeting.
So that works for me. With that, thank you.
Okay.
Okay, so we will table this until the next meeting.
And does staff have clear direction?
Yes, Councilmember Branding, we do. And I really appreciate spending a little bit of time on this item. I also will state for the benefit of staff that we do have a significant workload that staff is trying to work through, especially in the Community Development Department. And so the quicker we get through some of these decisions, especially after meeting with, attempting to meet with the committee for months, the quicker we can get to some other high-priority items for the community. So I had to state that. But yes, your direction is very clear. We will continue this item to the next meeting, to the next council meeting of July 22nd and make ourselves available to meet with the committee by the end of this week.
I have a quick question, if I may. Certainly. Oh, I have a comment after you ask your question. My quick question is, given the staff's workload, would it be easier if we split the two items today and would that be a possibility? That's one thing I was going to speak to, Councilmember Branding. That's an important issue here. Citizens for Balanced Growth only has, say, with regard to the Doorway Valley Settlement Funds. That's only with regard, I believe, to the Hartford property before you this evening. That's not related to the Greenville property. So you have two properties before you. So if you were to table, you can table the Hartford property, which then give you the opportunity to come back in two weeks. Or you could, and you can proceed today with the Greenville, which they don't have, they're not participating in because the Doorway Valley Settlement Funds are not being utilized for that project. All right, then, Mr. Alcala, you willing to help me a little since the motion? Would the motion be to proceed with staff's recommendation for the Greenville property and table the Hartford property for two weeks? Would that be a clear enough motion? That's clear enough for me.
Yeah, along with a clear direction that the committee should meet with staff by the end of this week.
Yes. Okay, that is my motion.
Is there a second? Okay, seconded by Councilmember Beriantos. Okay, so, Mr. Fruchy, you have until Friday to meet with staff and then it's coming back. We already have the statement from a representative from CBG that they oppose this. So if you come up with something different, then please make that.
That's not a true statement, but.
Pardon me?
That's not a true statement.
The direct quote on February 26th was, I don't want Livermore to buy any new open space. That was end quote. And staff should not pursue any. No, it was not out of context. That's exactly what he said.
Okay.
And so, so this is what we have.
Thank you.
So you have a week, you have until Friday to make your statement with the, to meet and confer with staff and Councilmember Branding.
I understand.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I think it's a foregone conclusion, but if, I didn't hear, I heard a motion and a second.
Yes, motion and a second, so I haven't called for the vote yet.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so is there any discussion on the motion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that passes and that'll be coming back in two weeks for the next meeting. Thank you all very much. Okay, on to public hearings. This is six-point-one. This is the vesting tentative track map and site plan for southwest of Portola Avenue.
Honorable Mayor Marshand and members of the city council, this is your city manager, Mariana Marashova. Item six-point-one is going to be presented by Assistant Planner Shannon Pagan along with Planning Manager Steve Riley. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Marshand and members of the city council. Tonight, I will be presenting the proposed Sheaora condominium project, which implements the Isabel Neighborhood Specific Plan. To provide a brief background, the approved specific plan intends to create a complete transit-oriented, walkable and bikeable neighborhood with increased housing and transportation options. The project for your consideration is within the specific plan's subarea 2A, north of Interstate 580 and south of Los Pacitas College. Subarea 2A is zoned residential and includes both the transition and village zoning designations, allowing for a density range of 15 to 40 dwelling units per acre. The project site is located southwest of the Portola Avenue and Tranquility Circle intersection. The site is situated immediately adjacent to the existing. The site is situated immediately adjacent to the existing Sage Residential Community to the east and sits just south of Cayetano Park. The project site totals over fourteen acres. However, due to trail, open space, and creek setback requirements, it is limited to a little over six acres of developable land on the eastern portion of the site. The proposal by Shea Homes consists of one hundred and sixty-four for sale condominium units, ranging in size from approximately fourteen hundred to over eighteen hundred square feet, with two and three bedroom options. The project would provide several pocket parks, including pedestrian, and also includes pedestrian and bicycle connections to public sidewalks and the existing Cayetano Creek Trail. The project complies with the specific plan zoning designations, minimum densities, and development standards, apart from the requested state density bonus waivers and incentive concession, which will be discussed further in a future slide. Taking a closer look at some of the components of the project, and just to reorient everybody, uh, Portola Avenue is north in the site plan. The project would subdivide the site to accommodate the proposed buildings, common open space areas, as well as the internal streets and alleyway network with access provided off of Tranquility Circle. In the northern portion of the site, a switchback trail would be established to provide pedestrian and bicycle connections to Portola Avenue. Connections to the existing Cayetano Creek Trail would be established in two places, providing pedestrian linkage to Isabel as Avenue via the existing trailway. In addition to the onsite connectivity, the project would also implement frontage improvements, including construction of class four bike lanes along the project frontages on Isabel and Portola. And also contribute to a fully protected intersection at Isabel and Portola, protected meaning that this intersection will become one where bicyclists would not have to merge with vehicle traffic to pass through the intersection. Turning to the architecture and building design, the project proposes both tandem townhomes and back-to-back tandem, tandem, sorry, back-to-back townhome building types. Each building type would be three stories and range in height from approximately thirty-seven to forty-two feet, which is similar in height to the existing residential buildings in the Sage Community to the east. The project proposes a contemporary prairie architectural style, which is complementary to the contemporary farmhouse style of the neighboring Sage Community. The project provides a robust landscape plan. On-site landscaping includes a mix of trees, shrubs, ground covers, and vines with both California native plants and pollinators. The project's landscape plan far exceeds the minimum tree per acre standard required by the specific plan and also exceeds the specific plan's requirements for both private and common open space areas. The project conforms to the specific plan's parking standards for both vehicle and bicycle parking. Parking would be provided within each unit's attached garage, and guest parking would be provided in various locations on-site and near the project's entryways. The project meets the specific plan's twenty percent affordability percentage requirements for for-sale units, providing thirty-three affordable units in total, nine which are median income level units, and twenty-four are moderate income level units. As mentioned earlier, the applicant requested relief under both the Senate Bill three thirty Housing Crisis Act and State Density Bonus Law. Because the project meets the twenty percent affordability requirement, it qualifies for unlimited waivers and two incentive concessions through state density bonus. Density bonus waivers were granted to waive development standards related to setback, building height, and EV charging requirements. A single incentive concession was granted to waive the affordable comparability requirement, requirements, excuse me, of the inclusionary ordinance, allowing for the concentration of affordable units in one floor plan and one building type. The project was presented to the Planning Commission at a public hearing held on May twenty first, where the Planning Commission voted unanimously to recommend project approval by the City Council with seven recommendations. Staff concurred with five of the Planning Commission, come, sorry, five of the Planning Commission's recommendations related to the topics on the left, incorporating them into the project's conditions of approval, which are provided as an attachment to the packet that you received. After careful consideration by staff, two of the recommendations made by Planning Commission did not result in changes to the project or conditions of approval, as they were either determined to be impractical to implement or would likely result in a loss of units affecting the project's ability to meet the density required by the specific plan. With this review, the Planning Commission and staff recommend the City Council adopt a resolution finding the project is exempt under the California Environmental Quality Act, adopt a resolution approving vesting tentative track map and site plan design review, together with the requested density bonus waiver and incentive concession, subject to the attached conditions of approval as recommended by staff, and direct the planning manager to file a notice of exemption in accordance with the provisions of the California Environmental Quality Act. If council decides to take these actions tonight to approve the project, the applicant can proceed with the preparation of the final map and ultimately move forward with obtaining the necessary building permits to construct the project. That concludes staff's presentation, and we are available for questions. But first, we'd like to invite the applicant up to say a few words about themselves and the project.
Okay, do we have any questions uh, to start? Okay, I'd like to hear from the applicant.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. Uh, David Best, I represent Shea Homes. Uh, and I appreciate your time tonight to hear our project. Um, what you have in front of you is uh, many months of, of planning and coordination with your planning and engineering staff. Um, and I think we've come to a, a place where we have a very nice project, meets all of the the conditions and requirements of your um, Isabel neighborhood specific plan. Uh, and we're excited to build it. So um, Shannon did a great job presenting it. I don't really have anything to add, but I'd be happy to answer any questions you have, um, if you have it.
Okay, questions? Shall we open here for the public first? Okay, let's, uh, okay, thank you, Mr. Best.
Right.
Uh, do you have any public comment?
Yes, sir, we do. Jean King?
Hi, good evening. I am here going to say something that I've said before. I really like twenty percent affordable housing. I like the fact that it's inclusionary. The thing that I would wish was different was that there were low and very low affordable housing, because everything that's here is median and moderate. And what we need for our arena numbers are many more units that are low and very low. And also I see with the, some of the uh, density things that the inclusion, the thing I like about inclusionary is that the affordable houses are generally mixed in with all the other houses, so that you don't know how you are, and seems understood that the, the affordable are not necessarily integrated into all the others, but I could be wrong on that. But anyway, thank you very much, and I would just like to see more low and very low housing. But otherwise, twenty percent is a very good number for affordable. Thank you.
Thank you.
That concludes public comment.
Okay, with that, I'm going to uh, close the public comment period. Uh, I do have a couple of questions for uh, for Mr. Best. Um, there, uh, we received a number of letters from uh, um, some of the residents from, from Sage, uh, and there are questions, one of the ones that came up was uh, uh, about the uh, the trash enclosures and the uh, whether or not it was the Livermore Sanitation would be able to, to access the trash, and there was some concern uh, with, with Sage as well. So what's, uh, what about the uh, uh, this Aura?
Yeah, so the, um, there is a trash uh, um, cart pickup plan that's part of our um, submittals. Um, so it's, that's been part of it uh, for a while, and we did vet that with Livermore Sanitation. And in fact, um, staff has a uh, email correspondence between myself and Anthony um, Mariani at Livermore Sanitation, who's the route supervisor, and they've reviewed our plan and they are perfectly comfortable with it and then say that they can serve it.
Okay, all right, very good. Thank you. Uh, questions, Mr. Brandon?
Uh, a quick one for Mr. Best. Uh, there was some concern in those letters as well about usage of Shea's uh, facilities. Will Aura have access to those facilities?
Uh, no, I think you're referring to the clubhouse and pool and uh, facility that's existing on the Sage Residential Project across the street. Um, that is a separate homeowners association. This project will have its own homeowners association, and so they will not have access to the Sage amenities.
Okay, thank you. And then just a brief comment about the low, very low, uh, as I'm sure, you know, our fellow council members know, if we were to change the project right now to require low or very low, would that, we be legally compliant in doing so?
So the, the specific plan has an existing requirement in place that requires a twenty percent combination of median and moderate. We don't have the tools in place at this point to require uh, a lower um, level of affordability, um, low or very low. However, we are contemplating changes uh, to the specific plan, and we'll be bringing something forward to you in the near future, near future, excuse me.
Sounds good. Um, and so we can't change the project right now. That's an illegal act by a council. Uh, if we were to require that, it would put the project in jeopardy, and Mr. Best would sue our pants off, I imagine. Uh, it would be a very easy case for him to win. So I appreciate uh, Ms. King's comments about, you know, our hopes that we can see more low and very low uh, built in Livermore. I would just like to ask Ms. King, though, uh, as well. Ms. King has the option of, and the influence to see a hundred and thirty units of low and very low housing built in Livermore within a year. Uh, it would simply take pulling the legal objections to Eden Housing. Uh, Ms. King is a major funder of uh, objections to it. If it were her choice, along with her compatriots, we could see a hundred and thirty units of low and very low built within a year or two. So I hope Ms. King has come to light and realized how important the low and very low housing is and is going to happily advocate now in favor of Eden Housing, since it is a issue that appears to be very important to her. So with that, I appreciate Mr. Best for working on this project, um, and keeping the neighborhood looking beautiful. Uh, I look forward to seeing this completed. Thank you.
Councilmember Beriantos?
Uh, I do uh, appreciate the project, and uh, I know GPAC spent a lot of time in it, but um, I am concerned about very low and low housing and hoping the city is gonna and not present the Eden project, and I wish it would be, be personal to some people, but uh, and that's still yet to be settled. So yes, we need very low and low housing for people. I was talking to a constituent of mine, she goes, yeah, um, she's there with her parents. And she's trying to figure, there's no way can I get into one of those affordable housing units. And they make, you know, I think fifty or fifty thousand each. And that's her concern. She, she's, she would like to see how the heck can someone get into one of these affordable housing units. To her, it's like a lottery, a shot in the dark. If you're, she's lucky to get one. She'd love to have one, but she doesn't think she'd even in the running for one, even though her salary, she works for the state, and you know, that, that is, doesn't have a big income. But uh, yes, I would like to see, you know, where someone would come in and say, okay, we're gonna you know, not think about capital gains and a lot of money and make myself rich. I'm not talking about you, okay, but, and I'll help build some very low and low affordable housing units. And so anyway, that's my ambition, and I hope uh, it works well and it goes quick.
Thank you.
Yeah, the problem is, is that uh, affordable housing, especially at low and very low, requires tremendous subsidies uh, and higher densities. And this, it also faces tremendous opposition from, from a community. So that's uh, those are all things that work against us. So, but we continue to try. And uh, all right, that, uh, and so, yeah, so thank you, Mr. Best. Uh, I'm going to close the public hearing. Uh, bring it back to council. Are there any further questions from the council? I'd be willing to entertain a motion. One. Okay, uh, okay, Councilmember Beriantos makes the motion.
I'll second.
Okay, it's moved and seconded. Uh, any discussion on the motion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? That passed unanimously. Thank you very much. Okay, six point two, uh, public hearing, or hearing to uh, uh, confirm the levy of assessments for landscape maintenance districts.
Honorable Mayor Marshand and members of the City Council, this is once again your City Manager, Mariana Marasheva. Six point two is going to be presented by Marissa Gann, Acting Public Works Manager. Give us a minute to set everything up.
Joe, great job at the Fourth of July. Excellent, well done. So it keeps our city in prime condition. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the City Council. My name is Marissa Gann, and I'm the Management Analyst for the Maintenance Division of the Public Works Department. The city currently has ninety-two landscape maintenance districts, organized under the Landscaping and Lighting Act of nineteen seventy-two. The costs for maintaining the districts must be fully covered, covered by the assessments received by each district. The costs are reset annually with an escalator of either CPI or CPI plus one percent. In order to levy assessments to pay for the maintenance of these districts, the city must conduct a public hearing. On June tenth, the City Council approved the notice of intent and adopted tonight, July eighth, as the public hearing date. Each year, staff reviews the costs, maintenance levels, and long-term financial stability of these districts. Staff then recommends the level of assessment required to meet both the short-term and long-term maintenance needs of each district. Staff has completed this process, and all of the proposed assessments contained in the consolidated annual report are within the voter-approved caps. Staff is asking for the council to conduct the public hearing and then adopt the resolution confirming the levy of assessments. This concludes the presentation. I'm available for questions. Thank you.
Any questions? Uh, do we have any, any public comment?
No public comments, sir.
Okay, I'm going to close the public comment period, bring it back to the council. Any questions, comments from the uh, council? Uh, so we don't make money off of the LMDs. This is, so we calculate what it costs to actually do the landscaping and, and that's, and that's what the assessment is, is that correct?
That's correct, yes.
So, so we're not, we're not making money on this. This is just, this is what it costs uh, to do business.
If there is any money left in the funds, they stay in that district's account.
Right, okay, very good. I just wanted to clarify that. Um, okay, uh, with that, uh, is there a motion?
Okay, I'll move, uh, Snatch's recommendation on six point two.
Okay, uh, moved by Councilmember Branding, seconded by Councilmember Beriantos. Uh, any discussion on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passed unanimously. Thank you much. Uh, okay, moving on to uh, seven point one. This is the uh, uh, meeting calendar.
Uh, Mr. Mayor and members of the City Council, uh, we do have a slide that we can present to you uh, for the calendar with staff's proposed recommendations. We're pulling it up right now. With a little bit of uh, background if needed on this item. You know, Acting City Clerk Debbie Elam is uh, ready to do that. Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Uh, Honorable Mayor, the uh, every July, the City Council approves an annual calendar, and um, that's the item that's before you tonight. Uh, City Council meets the second and fourth Monday of the month, and if there's a need for a special meeting, they meet on the third Monday. And before you tonight is the proposed uh, City Council meeting calendar.
Okay, so we, uh, have, uh, special meetings to cover for Passover and Rosh Hashanah. Uh, okay, uh, any discussion, uh, do we have any public comment?
No, sir.
Okay, we're going to close the public comment period, bring it back to the council.
And I think, just as a quick comment, I believe the proposed meeting calendar was updated from the original packet, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
All right, then, uh-
With the, the removal of Passover, because, um, those that, um, follow that holiday are able, are able to participate in a meeting.
Perfect.
Get that last minute, uh, email. Uh, is there a motion? Motion made by Councilmember Berantos.
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Branning, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? It passed unanimously. Okay, um, let's see, going to, uh, uh, matters initiated and council reports. Uh, Councilmember Berantos?
Well, I appreciate the effort over at the airport. Hot.
We can't control that.
Yes, I was asking, Joe, why could you? But a lot of people said, appreciate staff, I'm out of time, uh, and Marie didn't get cooked, she looked like she was halfway there. But, uh, it was fun and I enjoyed it and as I make one round to the car and come back in, I think I'll get shaved eyes. By the time I got back, that line was like thirty people long. But, uh, it was fun, it was, uh, enjoyable, talked to some people there and thanks for the job you guys did over there.
Very good, thank you, that's a good event. Councilmember Branning?
Yeah, uh, I was also going to say, great event, uh, really appreciative. The, uh, turnout was awesome. Honestly, I was really surprised, uh, I know our vendors were surprised too, because most of them sold out of food before the event ended, uh, which lets us know there is demand for this. Looking forward to next year, I assume we can make it even bigger, even better. Uh, it was great, I'm very appreciative of that. I do have a couple of things on matters initiated. Uh, most of them, I think, are just conferring on things that are already coming up. So first is, uh, I do believe we will get a report back from LPD about fireworks and their response to them in a coming meeting.
Uh, yes, Councilmember Berantos, uh, as a matter of fact, I have an email from our police chief in my inbox that I received earlier today that I will share with the mayor and city council either tonight or tomorrow, so you will receive that information.
Okay, perfect. And then I just wanted to address, uh, Mr. Stein's comments, uh, and ask, are we, I believe we also do have trees and tree inventory and tree replacement coming to council in the near future, is that correct?
Uh, Councilmember Branning, uh, staff is actively working on not only taking care of the city's trees. Uh, you recently approved a couple of contracts, a short-term contract and a long-term contract for proactive pruning of the trees, a- at the same time on a parallel track for continuing to look at the city's tree ordinance that comes with the survey of the city trees and that should be before you, uh, if not later this year, probably early next year.
Perfect, and then, uh, I do want to say, this is something that's important to me, uh, his talking about additional green space, additional growing space. Uh, personally, for me, what's really important is garden space and pollinator space. Uh, trees as well are a huge part and I know that we will be doing the general plan guidelines and guidance is coming to G-PAC soon. Uh, so just as that's going along, uh, I don't know if this requires head nods and direction, but making sure that, you know, design guidelines, design guidelines that encourage planting additional trees, uh, planting edible crops, planting pollinator crops included, along with, of course, our water conservation efforts. Uh, I know it's a difficult balancing act, but trying to fit that in, uh, if we can bring that to the G-PAC and get their feedback and opinions on it. Yeah, okay, perfect, uh, so that's, thank you.
Yeah, um, again, I was talking about the, uh, the trees. I got an email recently from, uh, one of these organizations that, uh, grades cities on their, their trees and, and their urban forest. Uh, and they, they dinged us, uh, and didn't give us as much credit as I believe we were due, um, because they said that there was a, a dearth of trees, uh, in the north side. And I pointed out to them that in the north side, we have our alkali sink, which doesn't have a lot of trees and there's a reason for that. Now, if they wanted to put in development in there, we could put trees on top of that, but that's not what I think anybody wants. We want to preserve that open space and the natural space. Uh, so they need to ensure that when they're looking at these things, that they're looking at the total context and not just that, gee, we don't have trees in the alkali sink. Well, there's a reason that we don't, is we've preserved those lands. Again, great event at the, uh, at the, the, uh, LVK at the, at the airport. Uh, it was exciting, uh, to, to see all the families, the, the, the young children that were out there, uh, getting into, uh, uh, some of the experimental aircraft, the helicopters, uh, watching how excited the kids were, uh, seeing the old warbirds. Those were planes, uh, the old warbird planes that were out there, the, uh, uh, the P fifty-one, the, uh, B twenty-five and the Corsair. It was, it was exciting, it was, it really was to see, uh, the, the planes that contributed to, uh, the preservation of American liberty. So, uh, that was, uh, that was a great event, so thanks to everybody. I mean, I saw a lot of Livermore staff out there on their own time and sincerely appreciate the time and effort that went into that, so thank you all very much. Uh, and with that-